And can we have the real call?
Mr. Shi? Mr. Mohan Patel?
Here.
Ms. Peng?
Here.
Ms. Conway? Ms. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Podolsky?
Here.
Ms. Mattiker?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Burrell Patel? Seven present.
We have coral. So, in the opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on October 25th, 2021, and December 7th, 2021. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. We can open up to administrative reports. Dr. Bragan, can you please elaborate?
Thank you, Mr. Mohan Patel. If you look at the resolutions under administrative reports, there are only a few. Under curriculum instruction, you'll find a resolution to approve field trips for the Model UN Field Trip and the FCCC LA. There's also a resolution to approve the professional development for staff. Under that, we have pupil services, pupil special services reports, which is our monthly added district report. And that's all I have under my criteria. Mr. Patel?
For, under business, we have the approval of the minutes from the November board meetings. We have the investment report of interest of a little over $7,600 and year-to-date interest of over $33,000. Then we have the report of the board secretary, and then the treasurer of school monies. In the finance resolutions, we have the transfer of funds, the acceptance of a grant for JP Stevens Co-Curricular Club Academy of Science in the amount of $1,000, the purchase of 54 passenger school buses. We also have the approval of professional services of Summit Management Solutions, participation in the ACES co-op, approval of speaker at TJ Middle School, donations to the middle school media centers, $500 for each middle school media from Mark Shawnwetter Holocaust Education Foundation, donation to the Benjamin Franklin Elementary School for $1,000 from the Beta Alpha Pi Chapter of Rutgers University, non-public school technology obsolete items, sale of surplus property, ratification for our self-insurance, the bills list, and the transportation report.
Okay, can we have a motion to go to?
Can I, can I ask some questions? Thanks. So just, just some clarificatory questions. First, these are 30 buses, right? But they're 54, it's called 54 passenger buses?
Yeah, great. It's 30, we ordered 30 54 passenger buses that we have a guaranteed delivery by June. So the price, that's the maximum would be, it was actually a little under that with all the extras per bus. I want to say it was 116,000 a bus or approximately there, thereabouts, with some of the things we asked for, like a camera, air conditioning, and some of the extra.
Also then, in the obsolete items, I saw that we were doing away with a lot of buses. How does that affect, you know, the transportation?
It's hard for me to hear.
Wait, I'll take, I'll take off my mask. So in the, in the obsolete items, I can see that we are doing away with a lot of old buses. So, so how does that affect transportation?
Good, great question. I'm sorry. And the buses that are in the obsolete sections, those are buses that are no longer functioning. We have probably about 30 buses that are operational. We have about 26 drivers right now, some big buses, some small buses. And we also have some buses that we've been using, for lack of a better word, to cannibalize them and to take pieces and parts. These ones are beyond use at all, so we're just going to obsolete them and put them off. And if we can get some resale value as junk or something like that, we will.
Okay. Then I had one more question on, just give me a second. Can you explain a little bit more about the speaker? I mean, the speaker at TJ?
Yeah, we've contracted throughout the year to try to bring literacy experts in to try to help during our professional development days to work both with students and with staff. And this particular speaker that we're going through Scholastic, I believe it is, we're using our Title money, so Title I grants for that. And if people remember in the past, sometimes we got cited for not allocating all of our Title I money. So we're trying to get good people that can connect with our students and staff and bring them in. One, because we think it's really valuable to help our students and to make those connections and some of the literacy experiences and expertise that they have. But two, we also want to use that grant money as effectively and as efficiently as we, as possible at those schools most in need. As you see, that's at our Thomas Jefferson Middle School, which is one of our Title I schools.
Okay. And my final question is, there's a resolution on sale of surplus property. What is this property?
Yeah, yeah. The surplus property is just things that are no longer operational, and we have to make it surplus before we can sell it, because the board did allocate it. It's an asset that we have. To use it, well, with all assets, you have some degree of a useful life. And Mr. Barker is really good with our technology. Once, you know, like for an example, we, we purchased new MacBooks for all of our secondary students. And the old MacBooks, the ones that we didn't go back and sell back, we had to obsolete them if they weren't part of the lease. So we have Chromebooks that their useful life has expired, and we obsolete them, and then we sell them for either their parts or their precious metals with inside, and we've been really good with that. But we can't sell them until the board obsoletes them.
Thank you. That's all.
You are.
Okay. If no more questions, we're going to open up for board member open discussion.
I just have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
As a follow-up to Shivi's question on the speaker at TJ, do you have any idea of what's involved? Is it a one-time? Is it a week? Who is, who are they going to be addressing?
I could get those specifics, you know, for you for the next meeting. I don't want to speak specifically about and say something wrong, but I could find out from our chief academic officers and get that information for you.
Okay. Any other questions? If none, we'd like to start off with the board discussion. We could start off with Bureau. None. Shivi?
None, thank you.
Dr. Yun? Chen?
No.
Carol?
It just, I was more interested in what Elizabeth was asking about that speaker. The extent of what it includes.
I'll get that and I'll, I'll share that with the full board. We'll try to get that to you in an email. Again, I don't want to misspeak, so I'll get the accurate information. We're not voting on anything tonight, so I'll get that to you before Tuesday's meeting, hopefully tomorrow morning.
Sounds good.
So we'll get that before Tuesday?
Yes. Elizabeth?
Tomorrow morning, I'll get it.
Board discussion. Your, your discussion.
Oh, no, my only other question is, so we're buying the buses. When, do you know when they'll be delivered?
I don't know exactly when they're being delivered, but what, with the purchase agreement and the purchase order that we signed, we have an agreement with the president of the company that they're guaranteed delivery by June of 2020.
So this wouldn't take place until September?
I'm sorry?
So they wouldn't actually be operational till?
Yeah, we don't really need them until September, but we had a guaranteed June date to make sure, you know, there's delays or whatever, so it gives us a little bit of leeway so that, yes, the, the plan is that we could use them in September.
Yeah, because I was wondering if they're coming in earlier, would this alleviate some of the work the bus drivers are doing now, if we can hire starting earlier?
We're looking to hire bus drivers now, so if you know anyone or always direct them to, we're going to put some advertisements out, and we actually have, I think, a bus driver on this agenda, and we're looking to continue to hire as many drivers as we can now to get up to speed, because we have, as I said, about 30 buses that are operational, and we have 26 drivers. So we could use more drivers even right now, before next year.
And the bus, the buses that we're getting rid of or that row at JMP?
I don't know them specifically, but some of those are there. But even at JMP, some of those buses that are there are some of the newer ones, too. So I don't want to say that as a blanket statement, but we're getting rid of the ones that are newer, operational.
Ms. White?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. I just wanted to address last meeting when we were discussing about JP Stevens' construction and so forth. All the board members that sit on this dais basically represent 20,000 students. It's not my favorite school, or this is my favorite school, or that is my favorite school. It's all the students, all 19 schools, they're all our favorite schools. And every single school in Edison District does need work, but we need to prioritize. We need to make the settings where we can start working on these schools, one by one, two by two, so forth and so forth. So that is my statement that I wanted to make, because I, after I made that statement about JP Stevens last week, there, there were some discussions in WhatsApp about, hey, he doesn't like Edison High School. No, I love all my schools. All my students are important to me. All my teachers are important to me. And therefore, when I'm making those statements, JP Stevens, Edison, all these schools need help, but we need to prioritize and we need to make those decisions so that they get the help they need. So with that, I wanted to basically go to public comments?
Public comments? Sure, one more.
Turn the page. Number 11, the ratification of electronic transfers. We talked last year that Alamo was thinking that we could be on track to be saving like $5 million, and now it's half the year. Are we still on track to absorb that savings?
Yes. That allocation is the electronic transfer for medical and prescription to fund that account, and that we actually pay out of that account the exact amount of claims that they are. And that budgeted amount is approximately 3.3 million a month over the course of the school year, does already reflect the $5 million in savings that was anticipated, and we're hoping it would be more. A lot of that depends on our prescription utilization, as well as our reimbursements for certain brand names or prescriptions and what our actual claims are. But when we run the claims reports, again, I think we have the accurate data through midway of November. We're on track and seems to be going as we anticipated, and we'll keep the board apprised of that as we go on. We have a meeting scheduled, I believe, the first or second week in January to get as close to a mid-year report as we can. Sometimes the claims lag as much as 45 days, you know, when they get to us and when the services were provided. So they're always a little bit behind, but as of now, we are on track, absolutely.
I was a little leery, so it's glad to hear that. Thank you.
There was one question I forgot to ask.
Sure.
So, can I speak? I just, one question I had.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So on, on the finance resolutions, there is also approval of Summit Management Solutions for an additional fee of $20,000. I think we had already approved them for $40,000, so are we paying them $60,000 now?
That's pretty astute. Absolutely, yeah. We approved them for $40,000 to do work in the district, and we're approving them to do it at a maximum of another $20,000. And what that work entails is a lot of the bookkeeping and records conciliation and the trial balances that are associated with our audit that weren't done up to the speed or where they needed to be as far as being current. So they did help us get to that point, and that is exactly what that was for.
So this amount is for what period?
It's for the current period, not to exceed, before the end of the school year, not to exceed that amount.
So basically, from now until the end of summer, which is June, not end of summer, end of school year?
Correct. But we anticipate that work's going to be done a lot before that.
Okay. Thank you. And what, how were we doing this before, when these people, when we didn't have this group? Was it Dan doing it, the business administrator?
I don't think this was work that Dan did, without getting into specifics of people's job titles. There's some inefficiencies that we noticed, and as, as Ann and I are working on that department and trying to clean things up, there were some things that were pointed out as far as the balances of the accounts that need to be reconciled on a regular basis. As you know, we have a budget of almost $300 million. There's a lot of money in and a lot of money out, and it wasn't accurate enough to date. So this is to bring us up to speed. In the future, at personnel committee meetings and board meetings, we'll talk about some things we think in the future, will ensure that we won't need that type of service again.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to go to public comments? Okay. Shivi and Dr. Yun? Okay. So the board is open now for public comments. You have six minutes to discuss and talk, and then ask all your questions once, and then we'll answer them, and then you have rebuttal time for three minutes after. So if there's any public comments, go ahead. Joyce?
Good evening. Joy Schiff, Edison, New Jersey. Do we have undue stress on teachers and the, is COVID placing undue stress on teachers to the fact that they have to substitute their actual teachers? Because there's like, there's substitute shortages all over Middlesex County. So I'm just wondering if it places undue stress on the teachers? And I also would like to know the answer to, do we have enough Paris? And are we paying our Paris? I know they get health benefits, but are we paying them at least as much as we paying the bus drivers? Those are the two questions I would like answered. Thank you.
Yeah, regarding the stress of our teachers and the impact of COVID, I think most would be able to say that this, the impact of this is not ephemeral, and it's been ongoing, that the impact of the pandemic on our staff, not just our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our administrators, it's exhausting. It's more work, it's more stress. Just talking with these masks on on a daily basis for students and staff alike is frustrating. It's uncomfortable, right? And sometimes when the weather's warm, it's really uncomfortable. So in answer to that question, Mr. Freeman, yeah, I think it is causing stress for our people. And I, I wish I had an answer and a magic wand, and I could make this virus go away tomorrow for all of us. With this Omicron variant, it seems like maybe it's going to be here a little longer. I don't know. And we take our direction from the CDC and the Department of Health, and we do the best we can. But we do recognize, as our administrative team, central office, and our building level, that this is a stressful time. But it's not just for our teachers, for our parents, for our community. You all know, you live in a choice, you, you represent the town, you know what our people are going through, seniors, young people, everybody. And it's, it's disheartening to me, it's upsetting. Some of our students are struggling academically, emotionally. We have children in high school and middle school that they really haven't been in this environment, that came from a middle school setting, and all of a sudden, they're in 10th grade. That was really the last time they were in school on a regular basis, and they haven't learned how to be high school students, to be middle school students, to be elementary school students. We look at some of our kindergarten students, you know, first grade children, the ones that were totally remote, and almost 75% of our students were totally remote for that year and a half. They're struggling. This is like, they're midway through second grade, some of them, and this is their first school experience. That takes time. And it's exhausting on our teachers and our, and our community, and we get it. We're doing the best we can. We're trying to support everyone to the greatest extent we can, but add to that now, a substitute teacher shortage that we can't always fill the positions. You know, sometimes on a, on a daily basis, we have 10, 15, 20 substitute positions that we don't have substitute teachers for. And that forces our teachers then to work that extra period, which would normally be their preparation period or a lunch period, and they cover, they get paid, you know, they get paid a little bit of money, but it's not the money that's, that they really want. They want to not have to do that. You know, Joyce, you are a teacher, that's exhausting. So yeah, it's a hard time for all of us, and I feel for them. We want to support them. The board has always been supportive, and to do what we can, and we're trying. So yeah, I would agree with you, there is a sub shortage. Dr. Adarelli, our HR director, has done a great job in trying to recruit, going to the colleges, making, re-establishing those connections that maybe weren't as vibrant as they should be. I think we have 10 substitutes on this agenda. It's not, it's not enough, but it's something moving forward. We've offered to pay them more, but some districts are paying subs $200 a day, and they still can't get them. It's not the money. I don't know. Yeah, all right. Well, I didn't know, I may have to talk to you later. But, so that is what it is. Regarding our paraprofessionals, you know, they work extremely hard, they are very dedicated. You know, sometimes they do some of the most difficult work and make the least amount of money, and they're, they're excellent. We, we hire a number every meeting. I meet with everyone that we hire. If you're asking me, again, I can't speak outside of a collective barn agreement, I think they should make more. You know, there was an agreement made years ago, long before, I think, most of these board members were here, that there was a budget crunch, and I think the Paris brought, felt the brunt of that and a reduction in their salary that they're probably still recovering from. And we'll pay them as best as we can, but no, if I could, I would pay them more, because they do great work. And they, they do difficult work. Not that it's all not difficult, but paraprofessionals are really important to what we do, and we have a shortage of those, is we have a shortage of teachers, regular teachers, too. We, we were talking the other day, when we used to advertise for an elementary position, we would have 300, 400 teachers. We have an, an open elementary position now, there's 21 applicants, 21. Of that, 10 probably aren't certified. So, yeah, these are trying times. I think I got, you had another question there, I missed it. What was the third one? Agreed, Joyce. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Keith Spavenna of Edison Township. Good evening. Thank you, board members and Dr. Bragan. Just here today to question the COVID protocol for the Edison School District. I have several questions that I want to pose this evening with the understanding that you do not have all of the answers in front of you. My son was sent home from school this Tuesday due to a COVID exposure in his woodshop class. I was told he could not return to school until after the new year. In three short months, we will have been chasing COVID for two years. While we do this, our children's education is suffering, both mentally and physically. Initially, we needed to ensure that we had enough healthcare capacity to handle the pandemic. Today, our hospitals are open for business and even laying off employees. We worried about family members at home that were at risk due to age and pre-existing conditions, and today, we have a vaccine for everybody wishes to take it, and you can probably get one within the hour. New Jersey law states that certain vaccines are required to attend public school unless written notice is filed for religious or medical reasons and cannot be questioned. So I do have a question on why my son was asked to have the vaccination status in the middle of an office. Yesterday, new protocol, new COVID protocols were issued by the New Jersey Department of Health stating a seven-day quarantine period and negative test results, and a person should be able to return to normal activities. In my opinion, today, COVID has become a political football, and unfortunately, politicians are making more decisions based on their own beliefs rather than a concrete, unbiased science. If you're truly educated-minded people, and your focus should be in search of reliable and factual information, you should be questioning decisions that do not have proof of scientific background, and I would like to see data based solely on the 15 to 18-year-old population, as this is the population that we're interested in. So I leave these questions with you today. I would really like to understand better who the LAE, or Local Education Authority for COVID czar is in Edison. Who do they get their guidance from? What data is used to influence the protocol that we use? Is this data specific to the age population of 5 to 18? How frequently is this data reviewed? What challenges are you making to health officials to get students back in school as much as possible? And is there an end game to this COVID response, assuming that we will not be eradicated? And how soon can this data be provided to us as parents to better understand what is the true risk of our children? Rather than my son sitting at home for two solid weeks, spending all of an hour and a half on educational stuff, and another four hours on video games because he can't do anything. So I'm a concerned parent, I'm tired of chasing COVID. This new variant, from everything I've heard, is nothing more than the common cold, and we don't send kids home. I want to work with the Board of Ed, I want to work with the school. I don't want to be saying, I don't want to get my kid tested, because it's going to open up a can of worms for everybody he was around. And as far as having the discrimination, excuse me, the discrimination of unvaccinated kids, my kid is sitting home for two weeks because he was exposed by a vaccinated kid. So we all should understand that the vaccine is merely to hopefully keep us out of the hospital and not to discriminate against parents who don't wish to have their kid in this science experiment to find out that there's no long-term effects to this vaccine. Thank you.
Dr. Bragan?
Yeah. Keith, I can appreciate your frustration. You know, there's a lot going on regarding the virus that's outside our control, as the school board, as well as an education. We are the local education authority. When you talk about an LAE, that's the school board, that's myself, as the chief school administrator. And we have to take the direction from the State Department of Ed regarding these parameters, the CDC guidance, the Department of Health, both local, state, and county level, that kind of drive the decision-making process. When I'm done, I'm going to ask Dr. Adarelli to go over some of our protocols and maybe update, there were some changes actually made today that were shared. But the problem is, when someone's been identified as a close contact, again, there were some changes today that Dr. Adarelli will speak of, but if somebody was identified as a close contact, we don't have a choice. The time that they have to be out is dedicated, predicated by the guidance from the Department of Health, and we can't deviate from that. I can, I can appreciate your frustration, I really can. And I'll ask Dr. Adarelli to talk more about those specifics, but regarding the specific data you asked for, the medical information, we don't have that. We're a school system. I, I'm not privy to that kind of data, nor I don't know if we would have access to students' medical information and data, but I do know that the vaccine status of students, we're not asking for that right now, we don't require that as part of our Genesis Protocol identified, but when it does come into play, is the amount of time someone has to be out, it's different depending on their vaccine status. So that question is asked. They don't have, you don't have to answer. They can say no, or they don't know, then we have to assume that they're not. But I can appreciate your frustration, and I can't wait for this to be over as well. Dr. Adarelli, could you update us on some of those things that came out today?
Thank you. I'm actually going through the information now, we received it today at about 3 o'clock, so this might be able to answer some of the questions with regards to quarantining and things along the lines. So prior to the information that we received today, that I'm kind of sifting through right now, any student that was identified as a close contact within six feet of an individual that has tested positive for COVID would have to go through two protocols. Number one, if the individual is vaccinated, that student does not need to quarantine, but should look out for the following pieces, any types of symptoms related to COVID over the course of a three- to five-day period. If that student develops symptoms and is vaccinated, they need to quarantine, immediately get a COVID test, and provide that negative test or positive test to the school administration at that time. Unvaccinated individuals, as per CDC guidance in the New Jersey Department of Health, it's a mandated quarantine of 14 days. Some, some other regions within the county or within the counties of New Jersey are different. It depends on the levels. Middlesex has been in the orange for quite some time right now, but they, they actually came out with new guidance right now. So it, I'm reading, I'm just highlighting it, so I'm, I'm going to be reading it verbatim. Acceptable options to shorten quarantine include the following. A seven-day quarantine with testing, so an unvaccinated person can end their quarantine after seven days after receiving a negative COVID-19 test result that is collected between day five and seven. So just to, to kind of put this in, in context, you get a phone call today from your child's principal stating, listen, your child is a close contact, he or she may be unvaccinated, they need to quarantine for a minimum of seven days on day, between days five and day seven. They should get a test. If that test is negative, they can return on day eight. So that's one option, if you're identified as a close contact.
My son was exposed last Thursday, today is day seven. You can yield the test today?
So, so based on this, talk, talk with, I'll, I'll follow up with, I'm not sure, I could talk to you right after this to talk about the school and everything else like that, but this, this documentation literally landed on my desk today at 3:00 PM. So, but, but yes, based on that, I don't know the particular circumstance, but maybe we'll talk off mic.
But I do want to understand why, as a physician, as a school board, why you're not asking these? why you're not asking these health officials for more concrete evidence based on children? That's who you, you work with, children. And I would expect a nursing home to find out more data specific toward the elderly. And it doesn't seem like, you know, you went to school for a long time, Dr. Bragan, you guys went to school for a long time. You wrote a lot of research papers. I wrote a lot of research papers. You want factual data based on the topic you're looking at. And it just doesn't seem to be, I looked through the CDC, I looked through the New Jersey Department of Health. Nobody wants to recognize some of this data. And I think it's because you don't want to recognize the data.
I can just say that, Keith. I know we're not supposed to go back and forth, but it's not that I don't want to recognize any data. The data that you're asking for, I don't have access to. So I hear you. I hear your frustration, Keith. I get it. But at some point, I, I'm the chief school administrator. I got to follow the laws of the Department of Ed that sets down as well as the Department of Health. I could question it. I could ask for more data. I could ask for specific data on students. But they could say, who got's? You do what we tell you to do. Or, you know, you, you're not going to be able to do your job. I have to follow what the parameters that are set forth. I hear you. And we will try to delve deeper and get those answers. But it's not that I don't want them. I would love for the data. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But none of, none of us don't. It's not that, there's a point where I have to do what I'm instructed to do in the bounds of the law and the executive orders that are put in place. And, and we're doing it. And is it great? Is it working out for everybody? No. And unfortunately, in the situation that you shared, I don't know the specifics about your son. But it sucks. He's banged up. He can't come for, when he's ready to work. I, I hear your frustration and we want to help get through it. And we're trying. I know Dr. Adarelli will, Dr. Adarelli will follow up afterwards if there's something specific about that case that maybe is different we could look into. We will.
Great. So the second part of this, it actually reduces the 14-day quarantine to 10 days in the event you do not want to get a, a COVID test. So an unvaccinated person can end their quarantine after 10 days if they haven't got, got tested. The only other piece here is, I know this often comes up as well too. I've highlighted a couple pieces about regarding travel, domestic and international. Fully vaccinated individuals or individuals that have recovered from COVID over the course of the last 90 days are not required to quarantine after travel. They should self-monitor themselves for symptoms. Travelers who are not fully vaccinated should get tested for COVID for domestic travel, but it's, but it's, but it's not a mandate piece. It says should. International travel though, is the same for fully vaccinated. Travelers who are not fully vaccinated for international travel are, are getting tested three to five days after their return. Mandatory quarantine for seven days. So it, so it doesn't look like that, that piece has changed. But there's definitely a shortened timeframe for any individual that's identified as a close contact. I mean, those are the pieces that I just gleaned quickly from this document. But as I go through this more in detail, what we do is we have a COVID exclusion chart for both students, parents and staff members as well. Those will be updated in accordance with this. And as always, I took my guidance from Jay Elliott and the, and the Edison Township Health Department, who are on top of everything. We, you know, we're in constant dialogue. We were speaking last night, late into the evening about a bunch of cases. So, you know, I, I understand everybody's frustration. And hopefully together, we'll, we'll get through this.
Thank you, Dr. Adarelli. And if you can, can we get this information out as soon as possible so the parents and everybody can get to know what's going on? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. No. Seeing there's no other questions, we would like to motion to private session? So motion to close public comments, sorry.
Motion.
Second, okay. We have Bureau Patel and Elizabeth, so. Public session is closed. Ann's going to read the, no, resolutions to close.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privileged discussion regarding litigation brought by former employees, Edison Wetlands Association contract, student matters, ETEA grievances, perk unfair labor practices and personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion to? Okay, thank you. We have Bureau and Shannon. Okay, this closed session is not going, is probably going to take an hour or so, but there's no decisions to be made? Oh, sorry, roll call.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay, so this closed session is going to be taking about an hour or so. No decisions are going to be made, so it's going to be basically closing session after that. So you're free to go home. Thank you.